You know this is twen- fifteen or twenty, uh, it's twenty minute ride all the way.
Hey, how are you?
From my house to here is a twenty minute ride.
Is it?
Yeah. Twenty minute ride.
Uh-huh.
From my house to here.
This, this is five minutes from mine.
Yeah, you're, yeah.
From off of ground.
Where's Miss, Miss Cleaves coming in?
It's her.
I don't know if Miss Cleaves.
You going to the other thing?
On Zoom. Oh. You, um, we still.
Yes. Wait, you, you're not going to it then?
No.
Yeah, okay, I'm checking it out. It's in my calendar.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would like to call the Flint Board of Education Committee of the whole meeting to order at six thirty P. M. Board members, I call your name. Could you please say present for the record? Trustee King.
Present.
Treasurer Luna.
Present.
Trustee Rutherford.
Present.
Vice President McIntyre absent. Assistant Secretary Treasurer Booze.
Present.
Secretary Perkins absent and myself present. Fine, present to. The board will not hear comments from the public. We ask that you state the reason for addressing the board and that you limit your remarks to three minutes. Please do not address board member by individual's name. The presiding office of the board should have the right to limit the number of persons who may address the board on the same subject. Please state your name and address before beginning to speak. If there's anyone here from the public who wishes to address the board, please come forward and line up, please. Thank you. Good, good afternoon.
Good, good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the board. My name is Kim Hatfield and I teach at Southwestern. So I guess that would be fourteen twenty Westwell Street. Um, the reason that I am here today is to seek approval for a sign at Cronin Derby Downs adjacent to, um, Southwestern. For the past probably thirteen years or so, we have been working with the city of Flint to, uh, work on a habitat restoration project, which is to save our mallard ducks that nest in our courtyards. And what we have done is we have worked with the Conservation District and the city of Flint and many other, um, community partners to maintain this area. We have, um, been recognized by the state of Michigan as having an official vernal pool and we would like to erect a sign to display the student work that they have done around the vernal pool, um, whether it is through mathematics, through science, or any other avenue that we teach them. And I guess that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If there's anyone else who'd like to speak, please come forward.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Uh, Karen Christian, president of the United Teachers of Flint, teacher here at Potter Elementary. Um, two things on the agenda this evening. Um, one, the, uh, letter of agreement for the GSRP duty-free lunch, um, LOA. Um, wishing that you would go ahead and continue that from the last couple of years that we've been doing to make sure they're compensated for not getting their lunchtime. And then the other one, um, talking about the, a letter of agreement for Ms. Forward, who's the counselor over at Southwestern, who's doing, um, multiple jobs besides just her own, um, making sure that students in all the buildings are getting their schedules and getting all the things done. So she's doing, um, double duty of her job. So we want to make sure that she is taken care of for all the extra time that she's putting in to take care of our, our students. Um, one other comment to make about enrollment. Um, enrollment's been a little difficult this year and I'm coming to speak on behalf of a couple of parents and some other people. We've had some kids, um, in several buildings that have been here since day one, but there's an issue that all of their paperwork is not being put in and so they're not getting into the computer systems. So we have students that we have not been able to take attendance on yet. And per the state of Michigan, we have to be able to count them. And if we can't take attendance on them, we can't count them. So we need to figure out what's going on in centralized enrollment so we can make sure that whatever's happening is fixed pretty quickly. I know that I, myself, have two students that have been in my classroom since day one and I have yet to be able to take attendance on them. So it's extremely important that we, uh, figure out whatever issue is going on so we can fix it and make sure that we're being able to count all of our students. Um, really important. I know that some, some students were allowed to enroll and their parents were given a certain number of days to get documents in. Those parents have turned documents in, but they're still not being uploaded into the system. So we just need to figure out where the problem is and get it fixed before we have an issue with not being able to count those students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very much. If there's anyone else from the public who would like to speak. I'll call also Superintendent Jones to present action items to the board.
Thank you, Board President. Good evening, Board Members.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I seek a motion and a second from the board to approve Resolution one point five Personnel Recommendations.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve item one point five.
Is there a second?
Support.
A second, support.
Okay. Seeing no further, is there any discussions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Um, I just want to highlight the assistant, um, principal at Southwestern, Mrs. Porter. Um, I've known her and I've seen her work with youth and, um, her passion and her leadership and vision is something that, that would definitely be an asset to, uh, Southwestern. So I definitely applaud Superintendent his staff on, um, finding good talent to come into the district. Just wanted to say that publicly.
Thank you. Is there any more discussion? Seeing there's no further discussion, the motion to approve, to approve Resolution one point five Personnel Recommendation will be conducted by a roll call vote. Secretary Perkins.
Yes.
Trustee Booze.
Yes.
Trustee Luna.
Yes.
Trustee Rutherford.
Yes.
Trustee King.
Yes.
Absent is Vice President McIntyre and myself, yes, six yes, one absent.
I seek a motion and a second from the board to approve Resolution one point six. Uh, Resolution to adopt Letter of Agreement with U T F G S R P Duty-Free Lunch.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move you approve item one point six.
Support.
Who supported?
I do.
It's her.
Is there any discussion?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Did anybody read this? Just asking. I was, I would hope so. Um, I guess to you, to Mr. Jones, are you okay with this? Did you come up with this figure?
Uh, I am okay with this.
Huh?
I am okay with this.
Did you come up with it?
Did I come up with it? Um, we worked it out through negotiation.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any more discussion? Seeing no further discussion, the motion to approve, to approve Resolution one point six, Resolution to adopt Letter of Agreement with U T F G S R P Duty-Free Lunch, conducted by a roll call vote, yes or no? Treasurer Luna?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Trustee Rutherford?
No.
Vice President McIntyre absent, trustee Booze?
Yes.
Trust, Secretary Perkins?
Yes.
Myself, President McNally, yes, one, two, three, five, yes, one, no. Proceed, Mr. Jones.
Yes, ma'am. I seek a motion and a second from the board to approve Resolution one point seven, Resolution to adopt Letter of Agreement with S E I U Local five one seven, Unit one fifty to one ninety-five workdays.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve item one point seven.
Support.
Is, is there any, uh, discussion? Seeing no further discussion, the motion to approve Resolution one point seven, Resolution to adopt Letter of Agreement with S E I U Local five one seven, Unit one fifty, hundred ninety-five work, one fifty to a hundred ninety-five workday, conducted by a roll call vote. Secretary Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Booze?
Yes.
Vice President McIntyre absent, trustee Rutherford?
No.
King?
Yes.
Trustee King, sorry. Treasurer Luna?
Yes.
Myself, President McNally. Four, yes, one absent and one no.
I seek a motion and a second from the board to approve Resolution one point eight, Resolution to adopt Letter of Agreement with Shandra Forward and School Counselor, uh, School Counselor Duties.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve item one point eight.
Is there a second?
Support.
Is there any discussions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Did this individual just receive an increase last year? Mister, to you, to you, to Mr. Jones.
Uh, an increase?
Yeah.
Um, would you speak to that?
Hi, I'd have to go back and look to see exactly what steps. So if she wasn't at the top step, then she was eligible to be able to advance a step. But that would have been the, um, only way that she would have received a, a increase outside of the previous year, uh, when we did the, uh, step restoration for staff.
If I can recall, because of the duties that were placed upon her not having other counselors, she was compensated because of the load of students that she was counseling. So therefore she was compensated.
That's what this is.
Yeah, that was for last school year. This is a new school year.
So that's something she's going to get every year?
Until we're able to hire another counselor, yes. In the contract, it has a ratio for counselors that says three hundred to one and our student count, uh, at the high school as well as, uh, the middle school exceeds that.
Oh, uh, okay, okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any more discussions? Seeing no further discussion, the motion to approve Resolution one point eight, Resolution to adopt Letter of Agreement with Shandra Forward and School Counselor Duty will be conducted by a roll call vote. Secretary Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Booze?
Yes.
Trustee Rutherford?
No.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Treasurer Luna?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Five, yes, one, no, one absent. Thank you. The motion passes. Board member, your package on page twenty is the information regarding the time and reservation. Does any board member have any questions? Got on page twenty.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I don't got one for this information, but it was for earlier about the, uh, recommendations. I saw some folks who used to teach in the Flint Community Schools come back, so that was nice to see.
One was a principal in a different district, so it was nice to see that happen.
Yeah, always. Any other discussion or question or comments? Please continue, Superintendent Jones.
Yes, ma'am. I seek a motion and a second from the board to approve Resolution eleven point eighteen, Authorization for a new sign for Cronin Derby Downs Park.
Madam Chair.
Uh, yes.
I proudly move, uh, to approve item eleven point eighteen.
Support.
Event promptly move and support. Is there any discussion?
I would just, Madam Chair. Yeah. Yeah, I would just say they're doing great work. Um, the Flint Soapbox Derby, you know, I mean, I went to one of their events, uh, by Kettering a few months ago. A lot of Flint Communities, Flint Community students there, among other districts. Um, I want to say they've begun their kind of restart the first time in like fifteen years. Um, and they're growing. They're renovating the track by Flint Southwestern Academy. Um, they're kind of busting at the seams. So I was looking forward to supporting them the best we can.
Appreciate it.
Any more discussion or comments?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I think that's a great idea. I think it's long overdue and, uh, I think the kids really would benefit from it in that area. And it also will show that the district is definitely not slum lords. We are due, it may be at a snail's pace, but nonetheless, I think we're doing improvements and we're putting the community first, so I'm definitely in favor of this.
Is there any more discussion? Seeing no further discussion, the motion to approve Resolution eleven point one eight, Authorization for a new sign for Cronin Derby Downs Park, conducted by a roll call vote. Secretary Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Booze?
Yes.
Trustee Rutherford?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Treasurer Luna?
Yes.
Myself, yes. Six yes, one absent. Board members, the handout you have is item twelve point one, the check present for the month of office. Do any board member have any comments or questions?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I just have one clarification. I, 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 if this was in my packet, I must, I missed it, but I don't know what page, three of six. A two thousand and three Dodge pickup? Why do we have a vehicle that old?
What's the vendor number?
It's three. Uh, I'm sorry, if you go over to four, four hundred eight eight nine two, I do believe. Mufflers and brake, a Dodge pickup. That's a, what truck is that?
It's a maintenance and facility truck.
I understand that, but why do we have a truck that old?
A mask.
I don't know.
That's a mask. That's not a comment to you.
What page you say that was on?
It's on page three of six.
Is the, is the question? Yeah, is the question, why do we have an old truck?
No, it's break, I, I don't know. I'm just asking a question. It's, it's a old, definitely old truck, two thousand and three. I'm just getting eight, nine hundred dollars worth of work.
Oh, oh, okay, I see what you're saying.
Go ahead, you want to?
I don't understand the question about.
You don't understand the question? We got a two thousand and three truck that's got the brake lines done for eight hundred eighty-nine dollars. What is that?
Oh, it's our board-owned maintenance truck.
It's your whole?
The board, it's the Board of Education vehicle. We own the vehicle and we had to have it maintained, serviced. It hasn't been in the garage in years and it needs a lot of work.
It hasn't been in use?
Hasn't been u-, hasn't been serviced in years. They've used it daily without any repairs or maintenance performed on it.
Recommend a new truck? Twenty-two-year-old truck?
Yes.
Okay, that's what I wanted to hear. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Y'all need any more, uh, as related to the register? Seeing no more further questions, I move to the next question.
Okay.
Please continue, Superintendent Jones.
I seek a motion and a second from the board to approve Action Item twenty-five point nine, Recognition of Constitution Day and Hispanic Heritage Month.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I move to approve item twenty-five point nine.
Support.
Is there any discussion? Seeing no further discussions, the motion to approve Action Item twenty-five point nine will be conducted by a roll call vote. Secretary Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Booze?
Yes.
Trustee Rutherford?
Yes.
Trustee King?
Yes.
Treasurer Luna?
Yes.
And myself, yes, six yes, one absent. Thank you, board members. Board members, uh, we're going to seek a motion and a second that, uh, Pam Vera travels with this board inbound and outbound as of today.
Support.
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 We've been promptly moved in seconds. There any discussions?
Madam Chair.
Ma'am, yeah.
Yes, trustee Rutherford?
Um, I would like for it to reflect the position and not so much as the person because that position supports this entire board. And I think the individual in that position should be able to know that as the board travel, that's part of their responsibility, their roles and responsibilities. As we all have experienced in our travel, that it came a time where we were not, we did not have what we need. But however, this position had everything that we need. And I just think as we go forward, having this position travel with us allow us to get the information because this position attends the same classes and I think we all can agree that there are some things that fall through. However, this position seems to always have what we need. And I just think it's definitely an asset and it should always be that this position travels with the board. Thank you.
Any more suggestion add, um?
I concur.
It's been promptly moved in second. Roll call vote, secretary Perkins?
Yes.
Trustee Booze?
Yes.
Trustee Rutherford?
Yes.
Trustee King?
No.
Treasurer Luna?
Yes.
And myself, yes, six yes, one no, one absent. The motion passed. I also seek a motion and a second that, uh, the, the administrator's executive works with the board, has a charge card available for her as in the past. So when we travel and we have emergency, they would have access to do that as well as paying for your per diem and everything at the hotel.
What?
Support.
There's a motion on the floor, support the executive administration to have a charge card.
Madam Chair.
Uh, we've got a motion.
Hmm, in a second.
In a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Trustee King?
Yes, I remember we had this discussion, was it three years ago when we first got on the board? If I'm not mistaken, the superintendent travels and has access. Mr. Jones, do you have access to the district credit card?
Yes.
So my question to my colleagues, why would the executive assistant to the superintendent have a credit card also? When we also have our superintendent with us to use the credit card when we travel together?
Madam Chair, if I may.
Proceed, uh, trustee Rutherford.
I believe that the, um, that position should have the same credit card that the superintendent has instead of us opening up a new line of credit because there's going to be times where the superintendent would need to remain in the district and that position will be traveling with us. Therefore, we're not opening up another line of credit. But however, I believe it would be the best interest of the district to add another card to that same account where she wa-, where this position will have access to it. So we will not have to wait. She would be, this position would be able to take care of all travel necessities and lodging without waiting on someone outside of supporting us to provide with that information. It will all be digital, uh, digital and, um, accessible to all board members to see and we'll be able to keep track of exactly who's doing what, when, where, where and why. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Uh, trustee, uh, Perkins?
I concur with, uh, trustee Rutherford because I can recall an incident where we were out of town and, uh, it was a fiasco and we had to wait and, uh, put exorbitant money up and all of those things. And so I, I wholeheartedly concur with, uh, trustee Rutherford.
Is there any more discussion for first round?
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll be, I'll be supporting this tonight. I haven't traveled at all this year and it won't be tomorrow, at least with the, with the district. But in my professional life, it can be a lot to have the superintendent or the senior vice president or the C E O to be handling all the accounts for the individual members. And I'd rather have the executive assistant do it because to be honest, I mean, this fits her role. His role is to lead the district and to manage our operations. And to be bogged down by this kind of work, I think it's just not needed. Um, two, I think it'll reflect better in our annual audits moving forward just because it gets kind of messy when you have this reimbursement for this. Or let's say, for example, you guys are traveling tomorrow, you put your personal card on for the incidentals. It's just, I think, I think it makes it a lot cleaner than what we've done in the past. So I'll be supporting it for that reason.
Madam Chair.
Anyone else in the first round? Seeing I was speaking the first round, then we'll move to the second round, uh, trustee King.
Okay.
I contact the auditor and I contact Trump, the attorney. Uh, it's all, it's up to us. All it requires is a vote. There's nothing illegal about it. It's just being more proficient and we're traveling with security. Something happened, we have that card available. So all it requires for this to happen, we had it in before, before, before new board members came on, we had that access before under the previous, uh, executive administration. That's all I have to say on the first one. Trustee King?
Yeah, Madam Chair, um, the, never mind, it's okay. I, I withdraw.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, if I may.
Um, trustee Rutherford, yes.
Um, I was a support staff executive assistant for twenty, probably about fifteen, seventeen years and I, I'm passionate about that because knowing firsthand, being in a support position, you need everything at hand to do what you need to do because by the time that phone rang again, you're being asked to do another task. Um, I don't think this is outside of, of this position's realm of responsibilities. I really think it would help this position to be more efficient. And also I, I'm totally against personal vendettas taking place when individuals have power. They'll get upset and then everything, the dynamics change. So I think doing this will allow things to be efficient and personalities will never be able to take place. Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Uh, you did the second round. Is there one else?
I didn't do my second round, I just withdrew.
Oh, you withdrew, so?
I withdrew, so I'm just asking for. I was on clarification. What is the motion actually?
That the executive administration, uh, get added on to the charge card of Superintendent Jones.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you. And I concur. I am a manager myself. I hold two business charge cards. I have employees traveling and I do not allow them to travel unsecured. They might have a blowout. Everybody's not fortunate. We don't make sixty figures. Everybody's not fortunate, but my employees are very important to the district. So if something happened, whatever happened, that's what that card would be used for, emergency or to make sure that employees get back and forth. It's nothing big about it. They are audited every year, so I support this motion. Any more discussion? The motion to provide the executive administration who works for, assigned to the board to be added to the charge card with, conducted by a roll call vote. Board members, if I call your names, say yes or no. Trustee King?
Yes.
Treasurer Luna?
Yes.
Trustee Rutherford?
Yes.
Vice President McIntyre's absent. Secretary Treasurer Booze?
Yes.
Secretary Perkins?
Yes.
And myself, yes, six yes, one absent. The motion passed. Board members, in your package on page twenty-nine is the Vartech monthly update. Do any board member have any questions?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to congratulate all the teachers on starting the new year.
Yes. As part, uh, part of information, we're going to do that in remarks. We're talking about Vartech.
Board who?
Vartech.
Vartech, on page twenty-nine.
Oh, I didn't know. I thought you would pass that.
No.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay. Is there any question or comments on page twenty-nine, Vartech? Do any board member have any comments or remarks before we adjourn? Proceed, uh, trustee Rutherford.
Okay, as I was saying, I want to thank all the teachers for starting off the new year correctly. And, um, I did receive a call about a parent that had a concern about their child starting. Um, I think some things, just a matter of a conversation. Um, Superintendent Jones, thank you very much. Um, made him aware of something that had got to me. But I, um, as a board member, it's for him to handle that and he was able to handle it. The parent was, uh, very appreciative and we're going to always have some rips at the beginning of the school year. But, um, I have all the confidence in the world that the teachers will be able to make this a successful year. We have a lot of new teachers and, um, my, my hope is that we would just be able to overcome a lot of barriers and, um, work hand in hand and just, just make a difference. So a lot of things are going on, a lot of things are changing and we're really going to have to work together because we're not going to have as much support financially as we're used to having. It's just a lot of unknowns right now. But my goal for this district hopefully is that we move forward as best we can, um, being intentional and making sure that we all succeed this school year. Thank you.
Are there any more comment? Trustee Perkins?
Um, I want to congratulate all of the newcomers, uh, into the school system this year. Uh, we did the red carpet over, um, at all of the schools as a matter of fact, uh, on this year. And the children were excited about coming back to school. The teachers were out in full force. We even had union reps from all over the city come and support the red carpet event. red carpet event. Uh, the parents were pleased to see us there. Uh, the president and I were over at Holmes Brownell, and then, uh, there were others at the other schools. So, uh, I just wanted to say I'm looking forward to a great year, and, um, good luck to everybody, students, scholars, everybody.
Madam Chair?
Trustee, uh, uh, you can go first, go ahead.
Proceed.
I would like to say, I had the opportunity to attend a few of the open houses that were held at a few of the schools, and I would, I'm very excited to see how enthusiastic the parents were and the youth were coming through a building that was freshly remodeled and clean and nice and ready for them to learn. I had a chance to go to Durant Turey Mod. That was my first time being in that school ever and, uh, attending that school ever, and it was a very nice environment going on that day during that open house. And also Brownell Elementary. It was high energy, a lot of parents coming through, asking questions. I had a chance to witness a few new parents signing up their kids up to attend Brownell, and it, it was a very exciting time for me and for the, for the parents and the, and the students, and we appreciate all the parents who, um, allow their students to attend the Flint Community Schools and entrust the Flint School, uh, Community Schools with their, uh, scholars.
Trustee Luna?
Thank you.
Thank you, Board President. A couple things. Um, I spoke to a few parents since the first day of school, but in particular, there were some new parents, and one said, uh, two things stood out to her. Um, she had never enrolled her kids in the Flint Community Schools. They've gone to neighboring districts and a few charter schools. Um, but anyways, she had said that, number one, you know, was just welcoming, so shout out to the teachers for that. They're at Potter, to be specific, and also on that same note, um, she had mentioned that, you know, just seeing the school kind of refurbished was a huge draw too. I know, obviously, the teacher is the most important person when it comes to a kid's education, and I'm supposed to the parent, but having that environment that's safe and conducive is very important as well, so I think that's a good thing. Number two, I had the privilege of attending, uh, the ribbon cutting slash open house for El Ballet Fuglorio at the old Pierce Elementary School. Uh, really good turnout, a lot of actual Flint Community School students there who were being part of it. They do a lot of cool things there when it comes to learning Spanish, learning English, the music they do, the dancing. It was a really big turnout, um, had a really good time there. The building does need some TLC, um, so I would love to work with them with outside funding sources to address that. I saw folks from CS Mot, Ruth Mot, and Consumers there, so hopefully they can help refurbish that building to make it even better than what it is now, and on that same note, hoping we can do the same with another cut in, uh, ALA. Um, and then finally, I just wanna commend, um, you know, my colleagues the last few months, probably the last year and a half. I know sometimes we always agree about things, but it's just been really, um, less stressful, and I feel more empowered to make decisions about students, uh, the community, and educators, and less about some of the small rocks that can fill that cup and the big boat that we can focus on. I know the Flint community has a bad rep for constantly fighting when it comes to public elected bodies, and I think are working to not have that reputation at Flint Community Schools. That's it.
Thank you. Any more comments?
Madam Chair?
Trustee King?
Um, I would say, uh, last week, seeing the opening of school, it was a great opening day, um, being able to visit each building, seeing the staff engage, and our, um, all staff from admin to down to our custodial staff, all engaged with students, even seeing community members come out to help support and welcome our, our scholars back. Uh, just a huge thank you to our team, team as an all staff, from central office all the way down to, uh, custodial staff and our support. Um, thank you to the parents that, you know, chose Flint Schools. Uh, it's a choice that you make, and we appreciate you for making the choice, and thank you to our staff for coming in diligently every day, and I look forward to a successful school year, and overall, welcome back.
Thank you. Any more comments? Seeing no comments, I'm gonna speak before I give it over to you. Um, I work with an organization that works with the court and re-unify children back home to their parents. I have about a hundred-and-some kids in foster care in the court system, has been removed from their parents, uh, and mostly time they're here in the Flint community. You're gonna have some kids coming in that's in the foster care. Uh, they parent, and this risk factor, their parents could be cognitive impaired, uh, mental illness, whatever those risk factors, the children has been removed from their parent. And when I'm managing my staff, a lot of time they're looking for school. Well, who else am I gonna recommend? Flint, uh, Community Schools. I want teachers to hear me and hear me clearly, and I want the staff to hear me. Um, we're gonna have to pay close attention to who these kids are. Uh, some of them have never been in, uh, public school. Uh, some of the mom, um, they're gonna be working with parent partner. The parent partner's gonna have to walk in this building with them, because they trust the parent partners and getting their kids back in school. The kids have to have an education, a judge and order them, they, uh, they have to get back in school, and I hope that we have the service to accommodate them. So you might hear this term, parent partner. Uh, be respectful for them. A lot of them are gonna have issues. They've been away from mom and dad. They, uh, just had a family, uh, two or three, and it broke my heart, because they never, uh, been in this school system, but I kinda ensured the worker. But right now, I have a hundred-and-some kids in foster care tied up in court, and I'm believing that Flint has the resources. I don't know what those resources are, but I think we do have enough resources here, and if we don't, uh, get with the superintendent, uh, so we can help, uh, rebuild and revan- uh, rebrand our community and, uh, get these children home, because right now, there's a lot of uncertainty with the, uh, community resources that I used to use. We don't have them like that, uh, uh, anymore. Another thing that I would like to see Superintendent Jones, there's a lot of conversation about, uh, the water crisis lawsuit. Maybe we should have some type of working with the parent departments, our parents and teachers, and have a, uh, an open forum, have people to come in and talk to, uh, our parents and our students that they can trust, 'cause you've got a lot of people getting ready to take advantage of Flint kids and Flint community. And I'm just hoping that some of our teachers or somebody out there can come up with something where we can have them, uh, learn about finance, learn these different things, where we can, uh, teach them, if that's possible. Thank you, Superintendent Jones.
Yes ma'am. Thank you, board members. Just a few announcements. I wanna make sure that the public and all of you, I know you are aware through email, but, uh, this Saturday, those of you who are not traveling, this Saturday at twelve PM, we will have our back-to-school event. Um, it would be great if those of you who are not traveling could stop by and shake hands with our public. Uh, we have received over two hundred and seventy-five new enrollees in the district, and so with that stated, there's new families, new faces, and they will be present, uh, at this event, so I would like them to get to know our, uh, board team as well as our administration and teachers and staff. Also, the seventeenth is a big day for all of us, as we will be, um, cutting the ribbon, uh, for the Brownell Homes, uh, project. Yes, and, uh, we will have some special guests from the state of Michigan. Uh, so we are preparing, uh, for a great turnout and, uh, a great ceremony. And then that night, uh, can everybody say that night?
And that night!
We will have our first board meeting ever in the cube, um, that night at five thirty PM, followed by a reception at six thirty PM with the public. And so this is gonna be a great day for, uh, Flint Community Schools. We have not cut a ribbon on a new build in over fifty years.
Wow.
Time of the schematic design for the high school that night. So it's going to be a great, uh, day of celebration, and I'd love to see everyone present at that. So thank you, Board President, and I'd just like to say, to piggyback on your comments, uh, this was a great opening of the year. Uh, we have two schools that started, um, piloting enrollment in their school, uh, and that is Potter and Holmes, STEM Academy. And so we will have some hiccups. I'd like to thank Ms. Schaefer and Ms. Moore for, uh, and their staff for the hard work that they're doing, uh, but we're piloting this in those two schools to, to make sure that our families don't have to do a lot of traveling out of their community to enroll in Flint Community Schools. So we're trying, trying it for a year, and hopefully, uh, this can be something we do across our district, so that we are, uh, enrolling scholars in their community, in their school. So thank you, Board President, for a great opening, uh, of a school year. Thank you, uh, board members, for all your support this far.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Thank you for the board. Seeing no further business of the board, I declare the board committee of the holder meeting is adjourned at seven ten PM.